The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
Seven o'clock, we'll call our meeting to order. We'd like to start with the Fledge of Allegiance. Chris, would you leave us in?
Okay.
We switch it.
That's wrong. You have to move the flags back, actually.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Actually, yeah. You want to drop that flag? Yeah, if you can, never mind. Apologies, our flag is on the wrong place.
I wonder who moved it.
I don't know.
Oh, the carpet. The carpet.
Before we begin, I just want to address the obvious. In the midst of a very busy flu season, we're also dealing with the coronavirus throughout the world here in Connecticut. We've been meeting with the Farmington Valley Health District. We've been heeding the CDC and the World Health Organization's advice, and as far as what we should be doing now for the flu and the coronavirus, they're the same precautions. We should all be staying home when we are sick. Try and avoid contact with anyone who is sick. Wash your hands frequently for 20 seconds. If you have to cough or sneeze, do so into a tissue and discard that tissue. And the toughest one for me, do not touch your face with your hands. My nose is itching as I'm speaking right now. With that, we will begin with our presentations of recognition, The comprehensive annual financial report, which is the big document, the federal state single audit, the small round document, required which are presentations of you being Peter. communications, which hopefully you have, talks about our responsibilities, One.
Nope.
No motion.
No motion.
and then the recommendations to management, which is passed out.
We just have our town auditors here. If you guys want to come up to the desk and introduce yourselves.
And then we'll talk about some future considerations, what's Joe Santafanti of the Department of Engagement. GASB up to and what's coming down. All right. So some notable items in the 2019 GAFA, the general fund fund balance increased by almost 1.2 million. So if I could hand these out, we use this as a guide to kind And the signed fund balance as a percentage of budgetary expenditures was 14.37% as compared to 14.17% last year. of highlights.
Sure.
Pension plan funding percentage was 72.78% as compared to 74% in the prior year, and we'll talk over some more details of that in future slides. The other note item is we have some restatements. One was the early implement of GASB 84, which relates to custodial funds, which is nativity funds on the education side. Reclassify some unavailable revenues related to loan balances to be in accordance with GASB 65. There was a retainage adjustment that hadn't been booked in the prior year for the $954,000. The heart hypertension liability hadn't been previously recorded, so that liability was recorded this year. And then based upon discussions, looking at the actuary report, the liability for the library employees was removed from your financials, so you do have the assets are in one piece, but this year the liability was calculated independently because they are paying their own portion. So that did reduce the liability and took them off your financials. The new GASB statements that were effective for this year is GASB 83, certain asset retirement obligations, that relates if you were pre-funding to close a landfill, not applicable to the town. GASB 88, which relates to debt, that really had minimal impact. It just changed definitions, so capital leases, if they're equipment financing, are now shown as notes instead of capital leases. So the bondholders out there want to know all the debt that you have, so they want a little bit clarification, and this standard is meant to standardize how everything is reported. Looking at the financial statements, the opinion on the financial statements is on pages 6 through 8, section headings in the letter, detail our level of responsibility for each section. The opinions are unmodified on the financial statements, which is the right type of opinion that you're looking for. Then the other areas require supplementary information, which is probably about 15 pages related to pension and other things. We have limit insurance, supplementary information, combining schedules we do give in relation to, the financials, they're fairly stated. And then introductory in the statistical section, we don't give any assurance on those sections. The management discussion analysis starts on page nine, goes through page 18. This is a really good executive summary for the financial highlights and the changes in the operations as compared to the prior year. So I list out, I'm not going to go through all of it, but it talks about what happened in general fund, capital projects, all your major funds, enterprise funds, all service, so anything to change, what kind of year you had, what drove that change is all discussed in here, as well as the general fund budgetary highlights, any changes in the budgets, or any significant budget variances, and then capital asset activities, so any major purchases or construction, and then long-term debt activity, the changes in your debt, whether it went up or down, and that type of thing. Exhibit C is on page for the general fund. The unassigned fund balance, at the very bottom of the fund balance is 15.2 million. The rating agencies look, the guidelines for strong fund balance position is 10 to 15%. Obviously, there are many other factors that go into that rating, but you're right below the 15%, so you're in a good spot as far as that criteria for the rating agencies. And just for perspective, we just gave you some other comparatives, just because we do get the question all the time, where do we fit? So we picked a few similar towns. The North Havens on the low end, but of course they have Amazons, so that helps them out, helps them out a lot as far as grantless growth and to be a AAA rated. Next page is just your fund balance chart, just shows you where you've been over the last five years, so moving up from the 11% to the 14.4% that you're at now, that's a nice trend. The net increase in fund balance for general fund was $1.2 million, and basically that came about because revenues and transfers exceeded budget by $1,255,000. You had spending savings of about $342,000. And then your net change in incumbences, which were expenditures for budget but not cap, gets you to the net increase. So basically, your year was successful with that number because of revenues in excess of budget and spending savings. And if you look at the pages 78 and 80 that are referenced to RSI, that is your detailed budget and actual for revenue expenditures, that'll show you all the specific categories, like which revenues came in excess of budget and which departments that you had spending savings in. Internal service funds, pages 27 through 30. You have an operating loss of almost $900,000 this year due to higher than expected claims. Your unrestricted net position is about $2.8 million, which sits about at 20% of claims. A good benchmark is about 25%. Normally, your stop-loss insurance, your talent would be exposed for the first 25% of expected claims, so having 25% equity kind of gives you coverage in case you have continued unexpected or higher than expected claims. The enterprise funds are on the same pages, pages 27 and 28, just to highlight, the Westwoods Fund, $244,000 net operating income, the lease collection was about $48,000. At Westwoods, there was a transfer to general fund of $160,000, so the difference there is about $84,000. The due to general fund, just from an analytical standpoint, looking at that, it's $706,000, but if you look at your cash balance at June 30, you only have $52,000 in cash. So from a cash flow standpoint, it's something to pay attention to.
For your pension fund, can you found pages 31 through 32? It shows an increase in fair value of $2.3 million and an increase in net position of $2 million. The library's net position is $3.7 million out of the $91.8 million in total net position. There's also more information on the required supplementary information schedules on pages 82 through 84. The funding percentage was 72.78% versus the prior year's 74%. And the annual rate of return was 5.08% versus the prior year's 7.11%. The next slide, it shows your funding percentage as compared to some similar towns. You're pretty much aligned, Berlin is the only one that's quite a bit different because they have a type of hybrid plan, and it's also close to new entrance, so that one's not quite as comparable as some of the others. And then for your OPEB, there's no trust fund established because you're paying as you go, and the OPEB liability can be found on page 87, is $42.6 million. For your federal single audit, there is an unmodified opinion on compliance. You can also find the schedule of the federal money spent on pages 6 through 7. We tested two programs, Title I and the special education cluster, and we had no findings or questioning costs. For the state single audit, we also had an unmodified opinion on compliance. The schedule of state money spent, we found on page 13, and we tested three programs, the clean water fund, the reimbursement to towns, the tax loss on state-owned property, and municipal grants and aid, and we also had no findings or questioning costs. You should have also received a small letter with your package, the communication of those charter governance. That has several required communications, including significant estimates during the audit. The ones we believe were significant were the net pension liability, the OPEB liability, and the IBNR for medical and dental and heart hypertension. We also noted that the disclosures and financial statements are neutral, consistent, and clear. We requested and received management representations. There were a few uncorrected, there was one uncorrecting statement that was attached to the letter for the reserve for the 27th P period, and there were no correcting statements that we thought were material. We also just handed out the management recommendation letter. The town recommendations included purchasing and accounts payable, which relate to vendor approvals for being entered into the system, and segregation of duties. The payroll recommendation relates to segregation of duties. The golf course revenues had a couple areas relating to retention of documentation to be sent to the finance department from the golf course, the sharing of terminal logins, the creating arrangement policy, prenumbering gift certificates, and creating a policy for refunds and void transactions. And the last one for the town was reviewing the useful lives of the capital assets. For the Board of Education, the purchasing accounts payable and payroll recommendations were the same as the town. In addition for payroll, we included documenting monthly approval of payroll. And then there's also cafeteria cash receipts. That revenue should be recorded based on daily sales and document the reconciliation of the daily and monthly activity. For student activities, relates to segregation of duties and scholarship funds should be recorded in the general ledger. And as far as best practices, we recommend to all our clients that don't already have one implementing a fraud policy, and we also have samples of that. Future considerations for 2020 are ISGASB 90, majority equity interests. We don't expect this one to be relevant in 2021, the big one is leases. Essentially, every lease will need to be recorded, even if it's currently classified as an operating lease. We're working on a tool to help management assess that and to be sending that out as soon as it's done. And there's also GASB 89 with interest costs related to construction projects, which governments will no longer be allowed to capitalize. And in 2022 is GASB 91 with conduit debt obligations, which just eliminates diversity in practice, and we don't expect that one to be relevant either.
Senator Rowan, we'd be happy for any questions.
Sure. Kathy. So some of you may know, these are our new auditors. This is the first time they have presented to us, so the audit is a little bit different for us, for me too. One thing that I'm happy about is that when we do have a new set of eyes on our books and everything like that, there is some recommendations that you guys have made for us, so I'm happy about that, that we can look, that we have someone else looking at it, and we can, you know, we're open to looking at your recommendations and improving on some of these things. But I think the bigger question, or the bigger thing, is that it is a clean audit, and so that's the most important thing that it is that we have. And that's it.
Okay. Open up for questions.
As you noted, our fund balance is doing quite well. It's getting close to that 15% high end of the range, recommended range. Once we get to that 15%, what's something else that we can work on that the credit ratings agencies would look at, in your opinion?
The thing that I keep hearing that they're looking for is like a five-year projection of what you think revenues and expenditures are, so I'm not sure if you're doing that already, but I keep hearing that as being one of the requests, which obviously would take some work, to kind of project out where you expect to be over the next five years. And then they do look heavily at policies, so policies on how you manage, the more policies, the better for some reason. But those are two areas that keep coming up. I mean, you have financially, you have the numbers, that type of thing, management, they look at that, you have strong management, you know, all that goes into when they evaluate what's positive, what's negative, like trending.
And we do currently, Kathy, we do currently do a multi-year forecast.
Yep.
So it sounds like we're in a good position with that as well.
Yeah.
Other questions? I appreciate it. It's nice to hear after being with one group for a long time, as Kathy said, the fresh set of eyes that are still giving us a good, clean report, so it's always comforting to see with some new people. We appreciate you're coming in and presenting to us, and if anyone comes with questions afterwards, we'll let you know.
All right. Great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item D is our public hearing on the town manager's recommended operating budget.
Why don't I read the public hearing notice since Paula's not here? A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, March 10, 2020, at 7:05 PM in the Town Hall Council chambers on the town manager's 2020-2021 recommended budget, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 25th day of February 2020, Kathleen A. Blonsky, Town Manager. And so, just so everyone knows the procedure, we're going to have the public hearing on the budget. I'm going to start, then I'm going to turn it over to the school system, then I'm going to come back, then we're going to open it up for the public to ask questions. And historically, at this time, the council doesn't ask questions, just maybe just gives some general statements. It's really for the public to ask questions and have comments on the budget, and then we'll close the public hearing and start the agenda. And then we go tomorrow night with the Board of Education, which is more where they are sitting down there, and you go through their budget.
Very good.
Okay. Farmington Town Council and members of the public, I present for your review the town manager's recommended budget for fiscal year The general fund budget includes the recommended spending for the town, for the school system, for debt services, and for capital improvements. The recommended budgets for the Westwoods Golf Course, the Recreation Fund, and solid waste collection and disposal are also included for your review. The town council set a target in which the town's expenditure portion of the budget would increase no more than 3% above current expenditures. Along with the town council's budget target, the town strategic plan and the town council's and the town's capital improvement policy were the policy guidelines at the forefront when formulating this budget. The budget building process focused on the following two funding themes. Maintain current service levels. Continue to fund accounts at levels that will enable service levels to remain at a high standard. Additionally, any increase in service levels should be directly tied to accomplishing the town strategic plan and the town manager goals. Maintain current capital funding levels. The cost of maintaining the town's infrastructure through the capital budget is a necessary expense that has to be recognized. The cost of not maintaining the town's property, buildings, and equipment will have a significant negative long-term impact. This year's appropriation exceeds our capital improvement policy guidelines. Based on the town council target, I am recommending a town budget with an increase of 2.98% above the current expenditures. To meet that target, I decreased $1,650,223 from the budget that was requested by my departments. This decrease reduced the overall budget increase from 8.41% to 2.98%. An increase of 2.98% equates to $905,133 above the current year's spending. In most years, a budget of no more than 3% increase, $911,193, would enable the town to maintain or expand our service levels. This year, one significant factor is driving up costs substantially. The town's contribution to the pension plan must be significantly increased as a result of changes to the actuarial assumptions related to the mortality tables and other factors. Properly funding the town's pension obligation adds $588,130 to the current year's budget, which alone represents 1.94% increase. This allows for only 1.06% or $323,063 to fund the rest of the town's budget increases, including contractual personnel services. The amount needed to fund the contractual personnel services increase for 2020-2021 is $408,613, which is a 1.35% increase to the town budget. In summary, funding the required pension contributions and current contractual personnel services costs $996,743, or a 3.28% increase above the current year's budget. This is without any increases, any other increases to the budget. A 3% increase to the budget is only $911,193. Consequently, other accounts would have to be reduced, resulting in significant service reductions. Due to the unexpected large increase in the required pension contribution, I made the decision at this time to only fund the pension account at $3,905,000, which is $438,130 above the current year's expenditure, or a 12.64% increase. This is $150,000 less than our obligation. A 3% budget target did not allow me to fund the total pension obligation, maintain town services, and accomplish the town manager goals. That said, the $150,000 pension obligation should be added back to the budget. This can be done by increasing the budget target or by reducing services. If the town council chooses to reduce service levels, I will provide a list of reductions totaling $150,000. I will now review the expenditure portion of the town budget in detail. General administration. The general administration group of accounts includes expenses for the administrative branch of the town government and funding for nonprofit organizations that the town supports. Some areas to note, the salary reserve account and the personnel budget cover salary adjustments for non-union staff and others. A bargaining unit salary adjustments and step increases are budgeted in the respective department salary accounts for next year. Two part-time positions have been eliminated from the group, from this group of accounts. The part-time land acquisition consultant and one part-time town hall receptionist have not been funded in order to meet the budget target. The contribution to the library is $2,681,134, which is a 3% increase above current budget levels. Approximately every 11 years, the town has an additional pay period during the fiscal year. The next time this additional pay period is scheduled to occur is in fiscal year 212022. The cost of the additional pay period is $450,000. To defray the costs the town has in the past, set aside funds for this purpose, however, due to the budget target, we were not able to include any funding for this purpose in the 2020-2021 recommended budget. The recommended budget request for this group of accounts is $6,849,339, or a 0.65% increase from the current budget. Public safety. The public safety group of accounts includes fire, police, emergency, medical, and ambulance services, dispatching, and building inspection functions. Some areas to note, the fire hydrant fees are projected to increase $65,888, or 6.76% for the upcoming fiscal year. The police fleet account includes funding for three new 24-hour patrol vehicles. A lease payment for one new unmarked vehicle was not included due to the budget target. Our police vehicle replacement plan generally calls for an unmarked vehicle to be purchased every year. This account also funds lease payments for previously purchased unmarked vehicles. The police department shows a 6.84% increase. The majority of the police department increases in the salary accounts. Last year, the IBPO contract was not settled, therefore, the salary accounts were kept at the previous year's level, and the funds were included in the salary reserve account. The IBPO contract is now in place, so the police budget must reflect the salary increases for two years. The proposed budget request for this group of accounts is $10,651,665, or a 5.79% increase above the current budget. The public works group of account includes public works and development, highway and grounds, and engineering. Some areas to note, the highway and grounds operation includes funding for four seasonal summer employees who will be used to supplement regular staff. The position of deputy public works director is not funded in the budget. This position is currently vacant, and it's proposed not to fill it next year. The proposed request for the public works group of accounts is $4,657,475, a decrease of 3.79% below the current budget. Community and recreational services. The community and recreational services group of accounts includes community service and housing. Some areas to note, the elderly service account includes funds for the administration of the Meals on Wheels program, as well as funds for other needs, other needs of eligible residents that are not met by state assistance programs. The relief payment account is used to aid eligible town residents. This account was supplemented by fundraising efforts. The total request for the community and recreational service account is $889,520, an increase of 0.07% above the current budget. The other group of accounts includes funds for employee benefits and contingencies. The pension contribution has been increased as a result of changes to the actual assumptions related to the mortality tables and other factors. As mentioned earlier, this account is not funded to the actuarially recommended level in order to meet the budget target. The account also funds required contributions to the defined contribution pension plan. Workers' compensation shows a reduction due to good claims experience. Health insurance is increasing due to increases in stop-loss insurance premiums. The recommended budget for this group of account is $8,230,238, an increase of 5.93%. This position is currently vacant, and it's proposed not to fill it next year. The proposed request for the Public Works group of accounts is $4,657,475, a decrease of 3.79% below the current budget. Community and Recreational Services. The Community and Recreational Services group of accounts includes community service and housing. Some areas to note: The Elderly Service account includes funds for the administration of the Meals on Wheels program, as well as funds for other needs, other needs of eligible residents that are not met by state assistance programs. The Relief Payment account is used to aid eligible town residents. This account was supplemented by fundraising efforts. The total request for the Community and Recreational Service account is $889,520, an increase of 0.07% above the current budget. The Other Group of Accounts includes funds for employee benefits and contingencies. The Pension Contribution has been increased as a result of changes to the actuarial assumptions related to the mortality tables and other factors. As mentioned earlier, this account is not funded to the actuarially recommended level in order to meet the budget target. The account also funds required contributions to the defined contribution pension plan. Workers' Compensation shows a reduction due to good claims experience. Health insurance is increasing due to increases in stop-loss insurance premiums. The Recommended Budget for this group of account is $8,230,238, an increase of 5.93%. I've also separated the budget by object, which includes salaries, benefits, supplies, equipment, contractual, and utilities. The increases for each object are as follows. Salaries increased 2.98%. Benefits increased 7.51%. Supplies is flat at a 0%. Equipment has decreased 4.45%. Contractual has decreased 0.01%. Utilities has increased 1.55% for a total expenditure of 2.98%. The Recommended Total Town General Fund Appropriation is $31,278,237, which is a 2.98% increase above the current budget. The Debt Group of Accounts includes appropriations to make principal and interest payments of the town's long-term debt. The total recommended amount for the next fiscal year is $9,302,449. This is an increase of $4,087, or 0.04 from the previous year. This very small increase in debt service is a result of the drop-off of the debt, which was refinanced in 2015. Special Services. The Refuge Collection Budget includes the cost of collecting and disposing of solid and bulky waste generated by our town residents, our regional household hazardous waste program, and the town's landfill operation. This budget proposes no rate increase. The annual fee will remain at $235 per household. The Capital Improvements. The proposed General Fund appropriation to support the capital improvements is $4,335,983. This is an increase of 26.67% from last year's funding level. The Town's Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP, and the Town Strategic Plan were the policy guidelines that were at the forefront when formulating the CIP while focusing the appropriations into two main funding themes. These themes are equipment, infrastructure maintenance improvements, and technology and communication initiatives. The Proposed General Fund Appropriation to Support the First Year of the Capital Improvement Plan is $4,335,983, which equals 3.76% of the recommended general fund revenues for the next fiscal year. Based on the town's capital improvement policy, the town's objective is to contribute at least 2.5% of the annual general fund revenues allocated to the operating budget. I've included the complete Board of Education and Town's capital request as presented at the February 25, 2020 Town Council meeting. Bonding and Other. The first year of the capital plan proposes one bonding question for the Farmington High School Building Project for $110 million. Other appropriations include anticipated state reimbursement for the Farmington High School Building Project totaling $27,500. Board of Education. The Board of Education account includes a request of $70,386,581, an increase of 3.96% above the current year's budget. I will now call on Ellen Saouda, Board of Education Chairperson, and Kathy Greeter to present the Board of Education budget. Thank you.
Okay. It's good to be here tonight to present the Board's 2020-2021 Recommended Budget to the Town Council and to our community. On behalf of the Board, we really appreciate all of the time you put in and your thoughtfulness during this long process. I want to thank Board members that are here tonight. We have Beth Kintner, Andrea Sabinski, and Liz Fitzsimmons. And it's Mrs. Fitzsimmons's birthday today, so we have an extremely dedicated group of public officials. So I just wanted to give you a little background of how we've gotten here. The Board reviewed the Superintendent's 2020-2021 Recommended Budget in early February. And I do need to say, because of what we have done, you know, as a board, we feel so incredibly fortunate to have an outstanding Superintendent of Schools in Kathy Greeter. I've worked with Kathy for over 11 years. She has always presented the Board with a budget recommendation that is not only in the best interests of our students, faculty, and the entire school district, but she has a long history of respect and understanding of the taxpayers in Farmington. Her budgets are zero-based at the school and program level. Our Superintendent works extensively with our school administration and our central office before it comes to us, and each and every potential cost efficiency and containment is considered. And all this being done with a strong commitment to maintaining the excellence in education that we've come to expect in Farmington. So with that being said, we are experiencing a very challenging budget this fiscal year. We have significant budget drivers and contractually required increases in salaries and health benefits, and increases in the number and percentage of students requiring mandated special education services. In addition to these drivers, perhaps the biggest issue on our minds, and yours also, is the potential for a new high school building. As a Board, it was very important to us to show our commitment in partnering with the Town Council and our community. We worked very hard to reach the Council's target, bring you a budget that would keep the excellence of our education on track, and enable you as a Council to put forward a budget to our community that is respectful of the needs in our town right now. So in good faith and in the spirit of partnering with the Council and community, the Board took unprecedented action this year. We made the decision to make Level 3 cuts to the Superintendent's budget, meaning these cuts have the most significant impact on program, staffing, and students. These cuts were not easy. There was much discussion. There was much disagreement. But in the end, it remained important to the Board to partner with our Town Council, and we voted unanimously to make these reductions to the Superintendent's recommended budget. The cuts and reductions that I'm going to show you in a second total almost $450,000. We tried extremely hard to work with the budget target you set of under 3%, but we couldn't get there in good conscience. And it's our hope that you can appreciate our efforts. We did come within a 0.95%, but we just, we couldn't get there. So, and I just want to show you, we have a slide. Some of our reductions. Oh, thank you, Matt. So this slide is going to show you the reductions that we made in technology and equipment. We're postponing our one-to-one Chromebook initiative for one year, impacting approximately 1,300 students. And we will not be renewing some site licensing that supports students. In Facilities, we will only engage in...
Ellen.
Oh, sorry.
Major attention.
The met microphone? Yeah. In Facilities, we will only engage in health and safety major facility projects and postpone our K-8 Facility Review Implementation Plan for one year. In Staffing, we cut 0.2 of a part-time driver and 0.2 counseling at Irving-Robin School. This will result in less flexibility in mail delivery and other functions. The 0.2 counseling at Irving-Robin School, we will have one less period of counseling support at our middle, at our middle school. In Special Services, we asked our Assistant Superintendent of Finance to budget our reimbursement at 70% rather than 65%. Of course, we are, we are hoping it comes in at 70%, but we all know how volatile, volatile the state reimbursements are. So if it does not, then we, we would lose flexibility in addressing student needs in special services. So again, I just, I just need to be clear that any further cuts to our budget will have continued significant impact on education, and we are hoping that you will not hold us to your target, knowing that further reductions will impact program and staffing. So on the, on behalf of the Board of Education, I thank you all for your time and consideration, and I am asking you to adopt this budget as presented. And now I would like to bring Kathy Greeter up to go over our Board of Education's Recommended Budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. I'm pleased to present the Board of Education's Recommended 2020-2021 School Year Operating Budget to the Town Council and our community. The 2020-2021 School District Budget was developed to address the Board of Education's mission and our strategic improvement design within the budget guidelines, policies of the Board, and state and federal requirements. We did use zero-based budgeting through the budget development process, and as Ellen said, it is important to note that this budget has been reduced significantly to reach the current budget increase. Our Budget Development Guidelines provide direction in how school and program leaders develop their annual budget. So our strategic improvement design represents the foundation of our budget development. Farmington's mission is outlined on this slide, and it serves as one of the core documents within our improvement design that guide budget development in Farmington. This visual does represent our strategic improvement design. By aligning our budget development to our strategic improvement design, we ensure that budget requests advance strategic improvement K-12. I will go over this a bit because it is the foundation of our budget. The "What" is considered our vision of the graduate, which was developed in Farmington after a community engagement process way back in 2010. And Farmington really led the way in 2010. School districts are just now creating their own vision of the graduate, which NIASC actually requires now. We are now working with constituencies to develop an updated vision of the graduate to align to 2030 expectations for college work and life. The "Why": Our core beliefs outline how we interact with one another and how we approach our work with students each day. The "How": Our framework for teaching and learning, or our instructional delivery model, was created by Farmington teachers and administrators, and it aligns to research on how students learn best. And the "Direction" is our theory of action, and that provides a clear direction for the next level of work for all members of our school district. And as I said earlier, this improvement design is the foundation of budget development. This slide shows students actively engaged in purpose-driven, self-directed, mastery-based, and socially constructed learning experiences that are directly aligned to our vision of the graduate. Our budget supports a student-centered approach aligned to this design. This has resulted in impressive outcomes and an education here in Farmington that balances high academic expectations along with a caring school and district community. The Board of Education's Recommended Budget reflects a total budget amount of $70,386,581 with an increase of $2,677,976, or a 3.96% increase over the 2019-2020 school district This slide provides another view of the 3.96% recommended budget for the 2020-2021 school year. 1.86% of the 3.96% increase accounts for all contractual salaries. This increase is driven by our contractual salary obligations and increased special education services personnel due to elevated student need. 1.68% of the 3.96% increase is in the area of self-insurance. We are experiencing higher claim trends and an increase in catastrophic claims, which requires a larger increase in self-insurance. 0.50% of the 3.96% increase is due to increased student need and special education, contracted professional services. Examples include occupational therapy, outside evaluations, and support for our in-district specialized programming. A decrease of 0.1% reflects all other areas of the budget, including our transportation contract, supplies, equipment, and fees, thus signifying a decrease in all other areas of the budget. Since the entire 3.96% increase reflects contractual and mandated special education services and an actual decrease in all other costs, we have faced and continue to face challenges in identifying additional budget reductions that won't impact programming and thus directly impact students. As I've stated, the 2020-2021 Recommended Budget reflects budget reductions at the Superintendent and Board of Education levels due to the increased cost in health insurance, special services, and ongoing shifts in grant funding. However, the district remains committed to striving to maintain academic excellence and equity through innovative programming K-12, supporting students' academic and social emotional development, providing flexible pathways for challenge and support, addressing unanticipated and ongoing shifts in grant funding, increasing cybersecurity across the entire school district, containing costs through our zero-based budgeting, budget reductions and efficiencies, and maintaining class-size level in accordance with Board of Ed policy. In Farmington, we have much to be proud of. We continue to be highlighted at the regional, state, and national levels for excellence in teaching and learning and student outcomes. I won't highlight everything on this slide, just a few items. We're really proud that Farmington Public Schools 11th graders are number one in Connecticut on the NGSS statewide science assessment. FHS is also nationally designated by Newsweek as a top STEM high school. Farmington sophomores outperformed the national cohort of seniors on the college work readiness assessment, which is directly aligned to our vision of the graduate. And The Voice, our student newspaper at FHS, was awarded a gold medal for excellence in student media, and for the first time ever, was awarded a crown award by Columbia Scholastic Press Association, which is the highest recognition for that organization. We actually have a second slide of accomplishments. I'll just highlight a few. Our first robotics was awarded at the Industrial Design Award. We have seven female students who were recognized with the National Center of Women and Information Technology Award for Aspirations in Computing. Forty students participated in math competitions. A team of students from Farmington were awarded first place in the New England Math Competitions. And athletics. Full 2018 girls soccer achieved Class L state finalist. Winter 1819 ice hockey division state semifinalist. Our boys' basketball team were state champions in 1819. And the Connecticut Central Conference Champions include girls volleyball, boys' basketball, boys' lacrosse, boys' tennis, girls' tennis, and softball. They're just a few notable highlights, and please refer to our achievements PowerPoint and our results and outcomes booklet online for more detailed accomplishments. We include these accomplishments to assure our community that through the community's investment in our schools, Farmington schools, and students continue to lead the way. Here are examples of our favorable state rankings when it comes to expenditures. There is a relationship between the accomplishment slides and this ranking slide. Excellence in Education and Programming, as well as Fiscal Responsibility and Management. The ranking slides are based on 166 towns, with one spending the most and 166 spending the least. We are 141 in Purchase Services, 157 in General Administration, 110 in Instruction, 121 in Employee Benefits, 116 in Total Transportation, as just some examples. Given our extraordinary outcomes, coupled with our favorable expenditure rankings, here are some of the specific examples of how each day in Farmington, we, we focus on cost containment and avoidance while providing a high-quality education for our students. I'll highlight just a few items on this slide. We have updated our security cameras K-12, and this has resulted in additional annual savings to our operating budget. Updated features in our health insurance plan are projected to result in cost savings and avoidance. And Farmington Public Schools was successfully awarded security and school construction grants to support school safety and programmatic improvements. There are several additional examples of how the school district has focused on strategic cost allocation and excellence within programming and technology. I'll highlight two items from this slide to illustrate our strategic approach. There have been continuous improvements in network security and policies to ensure business continuity and protection from cybersecurity attacks. Our continuous monitoring of energy conservation utility to monitor computer consumption aided by replacement of inefficient hardware. This budget reflects significant reductions... This budget reflects significant reductions in technology, specifically in software and Chromebooks purchases, as well as facilities that directly impact our classrooms and students. This slide provides examples of reductions totaling over 1.3 million that have occurred during the budget development process to arrive at this recommended budget level. Again, the reductions thus far in the budget development process have unfortunately impacted students, and further cuts would impact programming, thus further impacting students. As you can see on this slide, we have reduced all elements of this budget except in health insurance, which is trending higher than in previous years. The first driver of our budget is salaries, and as you can see, this accounts for 66.14% of our total budget and reflects collaborative negotiations between various associations and the Board of Education. Each of the association's negotiated salary increases are listed on this slide. The salary series reflects a 2.79% increase over this year's budget. The second major budget driver is employee benefits. This account provides for 100% of expected paid claims and the administration of our employee health insurance. Farmington's preventative care measurements show best-in-class rates across almost all items. For several months, we have been experiencing higher claim costs as well as increases in catastrophic claims. Given this emerging trend in higher claim costs, there is a larger increase in this account. The employee benefit series accounts for 16.64% of our total budget. There is a 10.77% increase in this account. According to Cigna, health insurance trends are trending 12% to 15%, and even with this increase, we are trending at the average health insurance cost trends, which is higher than we have experienced in past years. The services series includes varied items. The series accounts for 13.92% of the total budget. It reflects a 4.88% increase. It reflects a commitment to providing excellent programming for students, especially in the area of special services for students identified with special needs. The increase in this series is across several objects. Two examples of increases in the services series are the transportation contract for transportation of Farmington students requiring bus transportation, as well as special services, contracted services based on increased student need. This was a series that experienced significant reductions, especially in the area of major facility improvements. This account provides for facilities, the next slide, or this slide, sorry, this slide, for facilities used in swimming and ice hockey competition, and for a purchase of a wide range of items such as instructional, health, custodial, computer, and testing supplies. The supply series is flat, reflecting a slight decrease of $25 with a 0% increase. The 400 series accounts for 2.65% of the total budget, and the increase is offset by significant reductions in the series. The next slide reflects the budget level for the equipment series, which accounts for .30% of the total budget. The series reflects equipment requests. There is a 47.04% decrease. We've made significant and profound reductions in this series, which will directly impact students in the area of technology. The technology budget reductions alone will impact approximately 1,300 students. In order to maintain the current programming going forward, we will need a larger increase in the 21-22 budget year to mitigate against this one-year significant reduction. The dues and fees series is the last series. It reflects a .35% of the total budget with a 3.29% increase in the series. This includes memberships to organizations as well as liability and property insurance. This next slide is an overview of the major budget drivers that reflect a 3.96% increase over the 2019-2020 School District Budget, all of which I reviewed within this presentation. The 2020-2021 Board of Education's Recommended Budget reflects significant budget reductions at the superintendent and Board of Education levels to mitigate against increased costs in health insurance, special services, and ongoing shifts in grant funding. The 2019-2020 budget has been challenging, and the challenges we're facing in our current budget year have made the development of the 2020-2021 budget more complex. We have implemented a spending freeze throughout this school year, only spending for mandated or safety-related items to address our budget challenges. Even with these significant budget challenges, Farmington continues a tradition of leading the way in excellence within teaching and learning, as well as student outcomes, achievements, and in the area of operations. We have taken a long-term, strategic, and highly effective approach to cost containment, avoidance, and savings so that resources are aligned directly to our mission and our improvement design at the student level. We approach budget development and management through a collaborative approach with all members of our school district community, seeking out new and innovative approaches that will contain or reduce costs over time while ensuring excellence in all that we do on behalf of our students and taxpayers. The clarity in our improvement design greatly assists in a systems alignment, including resource allocation and implementation of strategic improvement priorities by all members of our school district community. We work diligently with our school and program leaders to minimize the significant cost increases we are experiencing through reductions, cost containment, and cost avoidance. It is important to note that we rank 103 in our per pupil spending out of 166 districts, with one spending the most and 166 spending the least. Per pupil, we spend $1,620 less than the state average per student. This equates to millions of dollars less in our budget. In addition, we rank 14 out of 19 in DIRG-B per pupil spending. DIRG-B are the districts that are similar to us in the ability to pay and the population demographics. They represent the districts we compare ourselves to when it comes to achievement outcomes. We consistently rank at the top in Connecticut overall and within our DIRG and academic outcomes, yet our spending reflects fiscal responsibility across accounts. As noted in the presentation, we also reduced this budget by over $1.3 million from initial budget proposals, and this was done at the superintendent and Board of Education levels. Any additional reductions to the 2020-2021 School District Budget will impact programming, which will impact students, because we've already reduced all possible areas to minimize the impact on our students. Our student faculty, school, and district accomplishments, continuous improvement efforts, our rigorous curriculum, and high-quality programming have contributed to a nationally-recognized education here in Farmington at a lower cost. Although this budget has experienced profound reductions, we are committed to continue to provide excellence in educational programming, teaching and learning, and student outcomes. Thank you. Thanks, Matt. Total budget expenditures. The total recommended budget for the fiscal year 2020-2021 is $115,353,250, an increase of $3,810,173 or 3.42 above the current budget. The grand list. The grand list is broken down into three categories: real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles. The real estate account shows a .67% increase. The personal property account shows a 2% increase, and the motor vehicles account shows a 2% increase. In summary, the grand list increased by .84% or $30,739,282 for a total grand list of Some areas to note: real estate grew by .67%. Growth in this area is indicative of a stable economy in Farmington. Personal property increased by 2%. This increase demonstrates the solid business environment in Farmington. Businesses are continuing to invest in Farmington. Motor vehicles increased by 2%. Overall, we have seen an increase in the total value of cars in Farmington. This is primarily due to the newer model cars on the list. Revenues. Revenues have been broken down into categories that include other property taxes, licenses and permits, fines and penalties, interest, grants, service charges, other, and Westwood's golf course contribution. In summary, projected non-tax revenues are $9,635,006 or a 3.85% decrease over the current year. Some areas to note: fines and penalties are budgeted at a lower level than last year. This figure is based on what we've been collecting over the last three years. Interest income is projected to increase 28.57% or $150,000. State and federal grants have been slightly increased from last year. We have based next year's projections on what we have received this year and the governor's proposed budget for fiscal year 2021. The Westwood's contribution account includes a $327,233 contribution from the Westwood's golf course operation to the operating budget to help support golf course maintenance expenses. Other revenues include $450,000 in estimated reimbursement from the other major users of the wastewater treatment plant. This will be the first of 20 payments from these organizations for their share of the cost of the recently completed wastewater treatment plant upgrade. Recommended tax and mill rate. The recommended general fund budget will require a property tax rate of 28.89 mills, an increase of .92 mills, and a tax increase of 3.3%. This illustrates that the average residential assessment will see an increase of $209.41 in their taxes. In other words, $100,000 of assessed value equals $2,889 in taxes. The recommended 2020-2021 town budget meets the Town Council expenditure target. This budget mostly maintains the service levels that Farmington residents and businesses have come to expect. However, to meet the expenditure target, reductions in staffing levels were required. The proposed budget does not include a deputy director of public works, a part-time receptionist for the town hall. These positions are currently vacant. A part-time land consultant position is proposed to be eliminated and duties transferred to other full-time staff members. Proposed summer help for the engineering has been reduced to three part-time positions to one part-time position. Those two positions would have greatly assisted the department in complying with mandated stormwater permit testing. Other reductions include not fully implementing the vehicle replacement plan in the police department with a reduction of one unmarked car. As discussed earlier, due to the unexpected increase in the required pension contribution, the proposed contribution is $150,000 less than the actuarially required contribution. These monies should be added back to the budget. This can be done by increasing the budget target or by reducing services. If the Town Council chooses to reduce service levels, I'll provide a list of reductions totaling $150,000. In addition, as was requested, I'll provide a priority list of recommended capital projects. My staff and I stand ready to assist you in your budget deliberations this week, and I've shown here is the 2020 budget schedule, which is starting tomorrow with the Board of Education, and then Thursday will be my department heads coming in, and then Saturday for hopefully a wrap-up, and if not Saturday, we also have Monday and Tuesday. Thank you.
We will now move to any public comments on this hearing only. If there are other topics, we will have a separate public comment. So if there was anyone who would like to speak on the public hearing from the public, please come to the podium, state your name, and limit your time to five minutes if you would.
Good evening. Matt Hudfegner for Deepwater Road. I'm a parent of school-aged kids, and since this budget season, I'm a taxpayer, just like all of us here in Farmington. My family and I use sort of many services here in town, most importantly, the schools, and, you know, my kids' education through Farmington Public Schools, which we and everyone in town are very proud of. Sounds like the theme this year is maintain. I would argue it's almost cut to maintain. Sounds like we've already cut multiple millions of dollars before today, right? So, you know, as a taxpayer here in town, I support maintaining the level of services we have today. Don't get me wrong, it'd be nice to improve our budget, improve our services, enhance our community, but I get the reality of the financial situation, especially with the high school, on the near horizon. Thanks for your work on the budget, and I look forward to watching the process. Thank you.
Any other comments on the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Okay, with that, with the hearing closed, I will just ask the town manager, who had said she would show us what those 150 reductions in town services would look like if we were fully funding the pension with that, and the Board of Ed would ask to be prepared tomorrow to show us reductions that would get down to that under 3%. Just let us know what that looks like so we can have discussions. I don't know what we're going to be talking about tomorrow in particular and going forward. We obviously have that big item that's on the agenda. We have the new high school that we're looking at, which is our largest bonding issued, $110 million. So with that in mind, I thank you for your time, and I do appreciate the work that both the town and the Board has done, particularly the Board, who has done some of the cuts that they have not done at this point in time, and I do appreciate that. So thank you, and we'll see you tomorrow night. Moving on to Item E, new items. Having none, now we give a public comment on any general topics. If anyone would like to comment on anything that's on your mind, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Oh, five minutes. Jay Toulon, 39 Timberline Drive. I'm here again on behalf of the Human Relations Commission. Actually, I kind of debated exactly where these comments fit tonight, and they're probably more appropriate to public comment. They do involve a couple of items from the Board of Ed Capital Improvement Plan, but I'm here mainly to talk about universal design. We, as a commission, have made a commitment to pay attention to, watchdog, advocate for, support anything in town in terms of projects, building projects, what have you, that might have something to do with universal design. To that end, specifically, I'm talking about the recommendation for the front door entrance at Union School and the cafeteria design at Irving Robbins School. I think they're both perfect examples of how universal design should and hopefully will be applied. I did reach out to the superintendent's office and wanted to thank her for Tim Harris getting right back to me with the answers to my questions. I guess basically what I want to say is the plan, if it moves forward, is that there is adequate ADA compliance space to install automatic doors at the entrance of the school. And I'm going to try and make this brief. In terms of the cafeteria design, again, some assurance that in the schematic phase of that, universal design will strongly be considered. I just wanted to take a minute to kind of talk a little bit about universal design. The guiding principles have, deal with equitable use, flexibility, low physical effort, and size and space for approach and use. I think those all apply. I also had a chance to take a look at Chapter 28 of the TPC standards, which has language dealing with automatic door openers and building entrances, and there are clear mandates that I believe apply to both of those projects should they move forward. Again, I want to just reiterate that I'm not going to go into detail about all the language that applies, but I just want to again mention that the Human Relations Commission is committed to, you know, pay attention to this. I think these two plans are very important to those schools and to those communities. And, you know, again, just want to thank you for the opportunity. I do have a plan. I'm going to try to have something to say on behalf of the commission at all the meetings, and this is it for tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? That being said, reading of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the February 11, 2020 regular Town Council meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve the February 20, 2020 special Town Council meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I make a motion to approve the February 25, 2020 regular Town Council meeting.
Second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to Item H, reading of Moving on to item H, reading of communication and written appeals.
You have the written correspondence from me to Thomas Kirk of Mira, and just saying that the tip fees that they're recommending are too high, and that we would like them, that it's not acceptable to Farmington. That's it for correspondence.
Very good. Report of committees. Yukon Health Committee. No report. Have to think about that one. Land Acquisition Committee.
Nothing new to report, except we do have an agenda item this evening.
Green Efforts Committee.
Yes, we've had a couple meetings since last report. And just kind of hit some of the highlights. We initially had, in the February 12 meeting, a nice presentation by the First Lega Liga students on a composting white paper and project they'd be willing to undertake. So we're engaging with them to maybe go through a trial process with the small projects in their respective communities to see, and see if it gets some traction. But it's a nice, it was a nice presentation by the students on the composting project to see where it goes. So we're going to continue to work with them. There's been a fair amount of discussion just on our communications relative to our Green Efforts newsletter and Explore Farmington with article submissions, so we can continue to get out in front of the public with regard to our communications of our efforts. In our last, you know, meeting, we had a project which I mentioned a little bit as a side note to us, some of the council members, but we had a presentation put forth by an organization called Sustainable CT. Alyssa Norwood from the organization came to present to us about a community-based project where communities register with this state, the organization, and you obtain a certification as to your green effort, green efforts in town in a sustainable environment based upon equity in the environment. And it's a wonderful, it was a wonderful presentation, and it really doesn't cost much. There's grant funding that's, they'll do matching, and it's not a large capital outlay. And when you go through a little bit, and we went through the process, they have sort of a, you know, it could be a little bit flexible, but a five-year, let's say, look-back on what we've already done. So converting to LED lights in town is something that would earn us points within the Sustainable CT process. And my recommendation would be at some point that we have, when we get through the budget cycle, have Alyssa come back in and present to the full council on the projects. I think it'd be very worthwhile for Farmington to get into. I, I think there's over 100 communities already in the state engaged, so I think it would be a nice thing for Farmington to be recognized as a sustainable environment and advancing those efforts in the community. The other major project we've been talking about is just our annual cleanup day, which is set for April 25th this year.
Okay, everyone put that on your calendar, April 25th. Farmington High School Building Committee.
Our last meeting, we've kind of gotten to a point where I guess we're in the process of shifting from a conceptual design process to the schematic design process. The committee met and took the charge from the council in terms of reducing the overall net municipal cost of the project, and some additional, some initial ideas were brought forth by TSKP at the, at the meeting last week. And something as simple as shrinking the entire envelope of the building does effectuate some significant cost savings, and it looks like it's trending in a, in a, in a good direction as to bringing that within the charge that the council provided to the building committee. We've also had an initial meeting with Costa at the State Office of Grant Funding, and the project was well-received. That will be a dynamic, ongoing process, but the initial meeting was held, and the feedback that we received was positive.
Great, thank you. Moving on to reports of the chair and liaisons. Start with me. The high school building project, we had done a townwide survey previously. We're looking to do another survey. I was part of that committee. I'm just looking for consensus here that you're all good with me being on the survey committee once again, so we can do another survey of the town in response to the position we're in right now with the high school. Sure. Okay, good.
And CJ, just if I can add also, I mean, overlook this, but just another focus of the building committee at this point is, in this period of shifting from conceptual to schematic designs, is also a dedicated effort on the communications piece of it. Dubtailing just where you're saying, surveys and getting communication, engaging with the neighbors, and the financial aspects and all fronts of it. So we're shifting into a communications mode also with the building committee.
That's going to be key. Getting the public the information they're looking for and explaining the position and why we feel this is the right thing to do.
It's going to be a big focus going forward.
Also, on my report, I do want to, I mentioned it earlier, emphasize again, the town has been very proactive, and the town manager will get into more details on this, in addressing any potential future issues to our town with the coronavirus. We've been in a number of different meetings. We've met with the Farmington Valley Health District. Again, town manager will get into more details on it. We're doing everything that we can to be ready for whatever might happen. We're basically planning for the worst and hoping for the best. So with that, Board of Education liaison.
Much to the happiness of the Board of Education, it has been quiet. There's nothing to report. They went through the budget process, and their next meeting will be later in this month. So there's been no meeting since last report.
Thank you. Economic Development.
The EDC met on February 12. Entrepreneur Juan Ju presented his business proposal for 54, 46, 58 Farmington Avenue. This is going to be a new plaza near the Yukon Health Center that will house three takeout restaurants, one nail salon, and one other service type of retail business. There's not a lot of lunch options near the Yukon Health Center, and John Juan Ju sees this as a good business opportunity, and the EDC issued a positive referral to the TPZ for this project. The next meeting for the EDC is scheduled for tomorrow, March 10, at 5:30 PM in the town hall.
You can't go to that one.
Yeah, I realize that.
Farmington Historic District.
We now have a meeting.
Housing Authority.
Nothing to report on?
Human Relations.
Nothing to report.
Library Board.
Nothing to report on?
Town Planning and Zoning.
Nothing to report.
Unionville Historic.
Nothing new to report.
UVIA.
Nothing new to report.
Water Pollution Control Authority.
Water Pollution Control has their meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM for their public hearing for their 2021 operating budget at One Westerberg Drive.
And you also will be missing that meeting. Thank you. Any other liaisons? All right, moving on to the report of the town manager.
You have the written report in front of you. Just going on some of what Chris was saying about the Green Committee, their simple recycling, that's the free curbside textile recycling began on December 9. And we had a couple of bumps, but it seems to have been working out pretty well, and we did receive a modest check of $189.82 back, so that's great. And so it seems like it's very well-received, and we'll see. Erica, I'm not sure, does it come on a monthly basis?
Yeah, monthly. We've actually received two checks. Can't remember the $12 a month right now, but we have recycled 4.75 tons of material in two months. So, you know, we'll see if it continues at that rate. Obviously, people are cleaning their closets and stuff, but we'll see how it goes.
And there won't be snow covering the pink bags.
One of the things that we're probably going to have an agenda item is that when we had some rebates on one of our other initiatives, that money wouldn't go back into the general fund. It went into the Green Committee fund, and I think the Green Committee is requesting that these small rebate checks go into that Green Committee. And I think it's factual, Erica, right, that everything that the Green Committee has done, their newsletters and some of that, have all come from these rebates and not taxpayer money.
Yeah, it's totally factual, no budget dollars ever given to Green Efforts.
And they've done quite a bit of things, so I think we're going to be looking to move that, ask that those rebates go into the Green Efforts account in a future meeting. The virus update, it's, as CJ has said, it's been moving very, very quickly. We've been involved in conference calls, we've been having meetings, we've been with the emergency management team, my staff, the school system. As of last night, we had a conference call with the governor, and it did not look like he was going to declare a state of an emergency. He did do that today, which was completely, pretty much opposite of what he said he was going to do. So it moved really quickly in 12 hours. There, we're meeting tomorrow with the Health District, and I think the governor's going to be giving out some more information. We're obviously following and taking the lead of our Health District with the governor's office. We are activating what we call our emergency operation team. We've met a couple of times, but we're going to more formally do it tomorrow because things have been moving along quite quickly, so we really want to make sure that we're, we're prepared, and I think we are. It's on the town side, it's a difficult situation just following and communicating, but really on the school side, you know, Kathy Greeter and her staff, it's become a full-time job of what they're doing and trying to get information out. And, you know, so I think we'll continue to up, we've been doing our webpage, we've been, we did a video, we've been just trying to get information out, wash our hands, and we're taking it one day at a time, but I think we are, we will be prepared for what happens, and we'll keep the council informed, what, day by day.
Thank you. Okay, appointments.
We have an appointment for Agenda Item L3, that Phil Chabot be appointed to the Economic Development Commission.
A motion to accept the town manager's report, please.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Team efforts.
Good catch.
Paula would be very proud of you.
Take two. I make a motion that we accept the town manager's report.
Second. Any comments?
I just had one question about the report. Was there any discussion about what to do with the senior center?
They're actually having a meeting with the, all senior leadership and my staff, I think tomorrow, they're having, Thursday, they're having that.
The superintendent's and school nurses and Thursday is senior center directors.
And it does look like, based on what the governor has said, any kind of large events and those types of things are going to probably be canceled if they're not canceled already. And again, I think the two at-risk populations that we're most concerned about right now is our seniors and our school system, and so we are, you know, working, our health director is very good, Jennifer, and she's, I think, really up to speed, but that's the next step with our seniors and what's on the senior center and things of that nature.
Thank you, that's why I was curious.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm glad you brought it up. Thank you.
Right, it is a good question. Just to follow up on that, in conversations, we have been redoubling our efforts to continually clean the senior center and make sure all surfaces are wiped quite often. So, thank you. Any other questions or comments? That, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, Agenda Item L3, that Phil Chabot be appointed to the Economic Development Commission for the balance of a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30, 2020.
Second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
That Matt Hungfeger be appointed to the Board Assessment Appeals for the balance of a six-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2022.
Can you just give me what number that is, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, that is item L9.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Old business? None. New business?
Agenda Item N1, to set a public hearing on Tuesday, April 7, 2020, at 7:05 PM in the town hall council chambers on the town council's proposed budget for the fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Second. Discussion.
This is your budget, and it's on Tuesday, April 7, and you can see, I just, again, listed out the budget schedule, the town meeting, the referendums for you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda Item N2, to authorize the town manager to sign a inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing with the Houston-Gallston Area Council for the purpose of participating in the Houston-Gallston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Second.
This is a group that you have to join to do some purchasing, and we would like to join this group, and then we'll be able to, be able to purchase through them, and this is for our new fire truck, our Pierce truck. There's no cost to join, and so it's the different cooperatives that you can then participate in. You can't participate in the pricing unless you're part of the group. And so we're going to join the group, so then we can get a better price on our fire truck.
Will you be traveling to Houston?
No.
Okay. Any other comments?
How long does, once you join, it's indefinite membership, or do you have to re-sign up?
Let me ask Joe.
It'll be good, actually, it's a year membership, but the year runs on a fiscal year, so if we join now, our membership will only be good until June 30. Then we have to express to them that we want a continued membership, and then we could go year to year after that. So it's a one-year membership, but our first year is only going to be three months.
Okay, that's good. Is there any other benefit to it as far as equipment, besides the fire trucks?
Yeah, they have a variety of, excuse me, they do a variety of purchasing, different types of equipment. They could do trucks, they could do cars, they could do copiers, anything like that. What we'll do is we just go through their contracts and see if there's anything that we need, and we will look at their contract, look at their bid, see if it's actually a good bid for us. That's part of the thing, is there's numerous cooperative, purchasing cooperatives across the country, and we're members of probably about seven or eight of them. And what we do is we actually shop the cooperatives to see who has the best deal when we want to buy something. So with this particular ladder truck, we'd like to buy, our spec is built around a Pierce ladder truck, and Pierce has contracts with different cooperatives, but this cooperative had the best pricing. So we'd like to go through them to get the price. Otherwise, there's, there's actually a cooperative in Minnesota that we belong to, and they also have a Pierce contract, but their pricing wasn't as favorable. But we've bought other things. We've bought cars through some cooperatives, not through this particular cooperative, but through other cooperatives. We've bought cars, we've bought trucks. The back wall, the WPCA, we bought that through a cooperative. So sometimes because they're buying in volume, you get better pricing, and also because they have better expertise than we do in a lot of, in a lot of the spec building, we like to use their specs.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda Item N3, to approve the purchase of property owned by William Wallenberg III and Paul A. Wallenberg, located on 8489 Meadow Road, approximately 11.38 acres, for a price of $108,000, subject to receipt of an acceptable Phase I environmental site assessment report, and subject to due diligence, including but not limited to title search, and to authorize the town manager to sign a purchase agreement for this acquisition.
Second.
So you can see in the note that this is open space farmland. It's 11.3 acres. It's zoned in the flood plain, flood protection zone. It resources the farmland preservation. It's been on our list since 2002, and the acquisition cost is $108,000 with life use. And you guys, I'm sure, are all familiar with it. We've talked about it. It's the Triangle Parcel, located at the crossroads between Meadow and Red Oak Hill Roads. The property includes a 24 by 24 farm stand and a 30 by 60 pole barn that are included in the acquisition. As part of the sale, Paul Wallenberg plans to retain life use of the land and the structures, including the ability to lease the farm stand as he currently has done. All life use provisions will cease when Paul no longer farms the land. This parcel is one of the only two parcels of privately-owned farmland along the bend of the Farmington River. The town of Farmington currently owns 405 acres in this area that it leases to our local farmers. The acquisition of this property will assure its preservation, and the TPZ did a favorable 8-24 report at its March 10 meeting, and now we're just up to voting on the acquisition.
Very good. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda Item N4, to accept the annual report.
Second.
I don't know, did everyone get a nice colored copy of it in their packet? So this is our new upgraded annual town report, and Kat and Diane, our communication person, worked really hard on it. Again, as part of our overall objectives and communication, we're just trying to snazz up our reports and make them easier to read, and I think that this report came out really great. It has some different information for people. It's easy to read. It's easy to read, so I encourage everyone to take some time and take a look at it. But I think Kat and Diane, good job on this. Looks really, it's much different, and it has a lot of information for you guys.
It's really nice. Good.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda Item N5, to cancel the March 24th, 2020 Town Council meeting.
Second.
Historically, we cancel this meeting. It's the Tuesday after last, the budget schedule week.
Understood. Any discussion? Concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda Item N6, to approve the following property tax refunds as listed below.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item O, we will be going into executive session before doing so, since the camera will be departing. I will leave you with this from Johann Wolfgang van Gootz. Precaution is better than cure. Onto executive session.
I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters concerning the sale or acquisition of real, real property. In attendance and executive session shall be limited to members of the town council, town manager, and members of the Land Acquisition Committee.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are going into executive session.